Okay.
Okay, she's here now. They got her out again. Of course she's here now. They got her out again. They said they got her out again.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Learn more.
I brought her here.
Yeah.
You just had to move it.
I don't see anyone on me, but it's gonna be six, four, six, seven.
Ah.
Yeah, on your right side.
Oh, pretty loud. It was Macy that was quiet. He never heard Macy make a noise.
I didn't hear her.
She would get upset.
Miss your face this morning.
Need to count the order. Everybody reprieving their cell phones to the meeting adjourned. A pledge of allegiance will be said by Mike and a prayer by Jody Jeremy.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For me standing.
Thank you for being here on that day, Lord. I want to pray for everyone here tonight. I want to pray that we move our town forward and our country also, in Jesus' name.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Mary's report due in scrimmage, South Breeze RV Park. Uh, I got the man. It's a good way to start the year. Approved the man is from December 16th, 2024 public meeting.
I move.
Moved by Mike.
Second.
Second by Kip. Any questions? If there's any question, we'll go on Jody.
Aight.
Nancy. Mike.
Aight.
Kip.
Aight.
I got it. Building from his South Breeze RV Park, case to be requested, same, he planning, he zoning community, give a motion.
I move.
Move by Kip. Second by Nancy. Any question? If there's any question, we'll go on Jody.
Aight.
Nancy.
Aight.
Mike.
Aight.
Kip.
Aight.
Connie. I have it. You don't have any other options, right? Project status report. Our county engineer is not here tonight. I would like to, unless you have any question on the eleven items, uh, I should defer it to next meeting. Give a motion if you want to do that. I move. We move by Jody.
Second.
Second by Kip. If there's other question, we'll go on it. Jody.
Aight.
Nancy.
Aight.
Mike. Aight.
Kip.
Aight.
Aight.
I got it. Attorney's report, Mr. Ray.
Number one is the offer of people I would run legislation, uh, that is, as you know, the PCP did our final kind of copy over to Jacob. Why should you have to go today? Because it's up in the middle of town. Nothing yet. I've already made to Jacob somehow, despite the delay of completing the repair of the bridge till February 14th. And both of his offers make official discussion about whether we do get involved with this issue. So.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Any question, can you do it? Any question, we'll move forward.
Okay, yeah, uh, one more. Um, we are, so I drafted the donation of the American Legion monument. It's located at the Golden Center Hall. Uh, I've got the contact information for the existing things. The monument is owned by the American Legion of the United States of America, so it's only a collection of five. I drafted the donation and I'm just looking about that. I think I will make sure to keep down the specific location that the monument will belong to. I just need to have a little picture. Yeah, so there's one attached to the donation. But other than that, that's going with the.
Where's it gonna be placed then?
Sir?
Where is it gonna be placed then?
Somewhere at the park.
Yeah, I thought you had it positioned spot.
No.
Yeah.
Just throwing it around. I mean, you get everybody's opinion on it, but I think it needs to be close to the road in the park where people could pull up and pay their respects. Maybe. I think the area, like in front of the pool, between the street going to the pool and the skateboard park. And there, yeah, that's where Tom Thomas and Dulce had started a monument years ago. That was his dream and, uh, he never fulfilled. So maybe we can fulfill his dream as a citizen, as a councilman, and a citizen.
It's good that we remember, we remember. You can't forget it.
That's, that's my opinion, but if I want to some of that. Sir? All right.
Good.
Okay, and then the last thing, attorney's report, he is, uh, attorney to research council's option to lead the property voting there, twenty-six votes, six more ballots, people on board. Council voted to send a letter to the head of the county to appear to the council. Before the research, I drafted a letter, I think that we're just on it in the last eight weeks, going over it to make sure it's meet all the properties that we're trying to address with it. On the property, there's several vehicles that I think that the council bought where our piece isn't handling. So there are certain things that need to be talked through the council to improve in that letter. Bryce did say that I think some work has been performed on that property.
He started.
Right, he was cleaning up some of it. Uh, so the letter should be sent out every week or this week. And I'm probably shooting for the very second.
Okay.
Um, and that's all on the agenda for.
Well, I spoke to the Subaru a couple of times, meeting meetings. I thought it was the council, you know, but the town was good, the town meeting, we started doing. You think it'd happen?
Right, absolutely.
We'll see where, we'll see where, how far we go with it.
I was looking at the construction.
Right.
And I have put that in the town minutes, it'll be July, and it'll be five. Just about charge three, five, cell tower, just so you know, just making sure. I'm always.
All right, thank you. Any other question, Mr. Ray? If not, Chief of Police.
Full business, Hurricane out of repairs. The bottom project has been obligated to receive funding to do work, complete by deadline, if the same occurs first, two thousand twenty-four. Propagation station, Little Eagle, completed the toilet gate at the park. Big electrical box at the film station, street signs completed and reading on Washington sign. Lift station and sewer scrubs. See the citizens' private bill, fifty percent rulings. Asked it all on eleven, twelve, twenty-four, and it was advised it would be January two thousand twenty-five before CRC gets to this project because of backlog. To improve. To improve building, to improve bad house, the proposal alternate project, followed eleven, twelve, twenty-four, with a guideline will be January twenty, January two thousand twenty-five before CRC gets to this project because of the backlog.
Have we been debating the contract today since I turned here, waiting for these powers, how the rulings for the support letters? And they're stepping back in the tenth of January, and so they're anticipating somewhere on the thirteenth to finish off the remaining projects that are left.
Project base bid is the fourth quarter of two thousand twenty-five to repair the asphalt, Regis Boulevard, D.C. Drive, and Norman Street. Although Norman Street was, uh, was repaired. The other one, the county repaired, uh, D.C. Drive right now for the project. LAGP application submitted eleven thirteen, two thousand twenty-two, approved by town allow the council to award the project, skateboard park, parking lot, with a handicap park. Eleven twenty-five, twenty-four, construction is completed. Handicap marking are completed and requested removed from the.
Move. I want to look at it. It looks pretty good.
We did a good job. That's not practical. There's a motion made by, uh, executed by Jody. Any further question? If there's further question, we will on Jody.
Aight.
Nancy.
Aight.
Mike.
Aight.
Kip.
Aight.
Connie. Council Jeremy, the establishment provides criteria for speed bumps on Washington Street, Jeremy Lane, and D.C. Street.
Yeah, uh, I talked to him, Jeremy. We're gonna continue the process with ordinance, so you want to feel the same in the next one.
The office report, the copy, the, uh, the council, so all the council members have seen the copy of the, that proposed my work, and that new, new bit. That is, we kind of offer a lot of comparison, just, uh, these ordinance, their ordinance, um, come up the office. If there is, if people might be susceptible, then I suppose there is, um, a, 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 a.
Y'all okay with the way it's written?
All right. Energy, trim trees around high post, submitted request for probably, uh, I had said that.
Well, I go with, uh, in, in, uh, root forest base, there's not many trees on the bottom. The rest, we still have some, we still have that crooked hole with the trees all over that.
Mrs. Van.
We have a lot of branches on Marco.
On the north, we are in the north.
You can see the.
Well, you mentioned that last time.
Yes.
We're in the northern. From there.
Northern.
We can, uh, we can contact them again or?
Based on contact.
Yeah. They'll let us, they'll meet us on.
I mean, I market, but we talked about that. I market, uh, I get my own hours in, you get, uh, six, seventy, we never came, we never came, I was over a hundred dollars.
We're gonna have to stay.
Oh, yeah. Cause I gotta work auto in, like, in my street and stuff. That's in June, July, I have over four on that. That I call.
All right, Hurricane Francine's project has been created to file cat be clean for force, a complete material. Updated an assessors office, Avalory tag is, uh, inventory tag that could be cut from the tack roll that is there. We talked about that one before the meeting. L, LG, LGAP application, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, sidewalk repair between Duess Street and Bourbon Street. Reading on the water sometime in September, October of two thousand twenty-five. I'm in these procedures. Mr. Tom needs to have a court, sir.
I do swear with this property, uh, PC ten fifty-three, uh, this property has been condemned. The owner has until this date to repair or demolish, and our CPO does have updated.
This was a follow-up inspection. Structure has been torn down and all the lock repairs. Any ideas, motions, here we move it.
Yes, sir. Motion made by Jody to remove. Second by Nancy. Any further question? If there's further question, we will on Jody.
Aight.
Nancy.
Aight.
Mike.
Aight.
Yes. Connie.
I know he's not here, but thank you.
PC ten fifty, uh, this property has been condemned. The owner has until this date to repair or demolish. Our CPO has.
This was a follow-up inspection. Still needs to remove all.
All right, Mr. Ray, to the council.
And, and was it some contaminated materials or? I guess we're gonna have to hire somebody to remove it, you know?
I know they'd be trying to get someone.
And they can't hire, well, if they can't find the right to do, we can't either.
And look, it's probably about to be revamped. So if you, if, if the recommendation, get a price to get the thing, you might help them all out, you know?
Like a Monday, having surgeries or something.
What are you, what are you?
I move, we move forward.
Move forward and get a price?
Yes.
Motion made by Mike. Second by Connie. While the, uh, this, we're going to build all the, the. We will on Jody.
Aight.
Mike.
Aight.
Kip.
Aight.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, PC ten sixty-six, this property has been condemned. The owner has until this date to repair or demolish. Our CPO has. This was a follow-up inspection. No changes ever needed through this inspection, so there's no recommendation to see the property.
Move forward. Yeah. Next step.
Motion made by Kip. Forward, if Christ is the executive.
Second.
Second by Mike. Discussion, Jody, is this not the property we're talking about?
No, I think that's not even murder. So don't keep that one up, talk about it behind.
Except the one that we showed. All right, if there's another further question, we will on Jody.
Aight.
Nancy.
Aight.
Mike.
Aight.
Kip.
Aight.
Connie.
Aight.
Okay, uh, PC ten sixty-three, this property has been condemned. The owner has until this date to repair or demolish. Our CPO does have that date. Uh, if I may, if, yes, this, with, uh, our council members, uh, this is the pro, this is the property that is in the process of working with the restore program, uh, for funding to either repair or demolish. CPO has.
This was a follow-up inspection. There has been no, no, some changes in previous inspections, so there's no recommendation to see the.
I have enough big.
Yes, sir.
Got a call right before the meeting to God. He was supposed to be here. He said it did pass, they're gonna tear down the house and build a new one, which is gonna take a little time. Up to six months, tear down. She, she wasn't through, I know she was. He called right before the meeting. He couldn't make it. But he, I'm the only number he had. I thought the mail would get him.
I guess we'll leave Jody as friendly, something ironic.
Well, I'll call him after the meeting.
I don't mind talking, though. We need something ironic, saying that we do, we use the, the, the planning, we really don't have. Two months from now, they hear say.
One good thing, he's one of the big ones. Let's, let's.
What are your wishes? Do we get something ironic?
I made my motion like last time, fourteen days, and we get the people there.
Is the motion made by Kip? Fourteen days. Second by Nancy. Any further question? If there's further question, we will on Jody.
Aight.
Nancy.
Aight.
Aight.
Kip.
Aight.
Connie.
The next one is, uh, PC ten twenty-five. This property has been condemned. The militia bids, uh, I think, we, uh, the towns, uh, absolutely made, uh, definitely, if, uh, if.
Okay, I didn't know.
I was actually.
I, I forgot to say, and our CPO has it.
It's a new year, Tom. You guys are slapping.
Tom, you might have to go back in the room.
All right, this was a follow-up inspection. The structure has been torn down, but needs to remove all of the models to clear it from the side.
So you want to give?
He still has, um, but contractors to deal with.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we're doing the contractor.
Right.
Is all right with the council? All right, we move forward.
All right, PC ten. All right, B C ten sixty eight, that's second, the property has been condemned, demolition bids have been reviewed and, uh, C P O has an.
This was a follow-up inspection, there have been no changes to the structures and through this inspection, so there's no recommendation to proceed with the property.
I've been noticing, it's down my street, they've been having somebody there almost every day, I don't know what they're doing. I don't see that going.
Well, that, in the meeting, we had a conversation, that one of our family members said they want to save the property. So, Mr. Ben Oden had the bid, and Ben's gonna hold up on it, but Ben told me you better have some changes before the next meeting.
Yeah, they do something outside, they, they must be working inside.
And Ben, Ben told me to be here at the meeting, and Ben has the contractor tear it down. Now, we gotta see, I'm just gonna share a little situation here, uh, when we stop it, go off the bids, forget bids. And people are annoyed, you know, who worked a bid, signed a contract, and promptly on the decide, you get it cheaper somewhere else. I don't think it's right for people to give the bids out. I mean, the contract's a contract. This is where we at.
I was, I was a buddy before you started talking to me, I was a buddy, I said maybe we're running it on the second, if, if these are the six, or we ain't close to that party five days, finish contract.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. You make the deal, it.
Yeah.
Then say, well.
But I'm saying, he's got the contract, he ain't close to that party five days.
Thing is, you put the contract.
Then he's gonna be in default if he don't complete it.
Yeah, exactly. But at the same time, you got a contract to make a decision for the council.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Exactly.
So, Ben needs to move forward, but that's my recommendation, I don't know what you feel.
The same, uh, the same way.
I just, we just notified Ben in the morning, I mean, the gentleman's not here as far as I know. Feel for him, you know, but. All right, thank you.
Uh, next was B C ten sixty, we worked with the property, have been condemned, demolition bids have been, C P O, uh, C P O has an.
This was a follow-up inspection, there are buildings, and it has to be on one site to remove the, uh, the demolish materials, but it's not repeated.
You heard him, you.
Kip. You had a contract, so you follow the contract.
Uh, B C ten sixty seven, this property is scheduled for condemnation during the state, we do have good service, and our C P O has an.
This was a follow-up inspection, there are no changes through this inspection, so there's no recommendation to proceed with the property. Okay, uh, we have, Ricky, you had a phone call today?
Yeah, we didn't come to the meeting, you know, and, and we're working with Ben, so we've made a couple of things to Ben already to get it done.
So, Ricky, the council, how much time do you?
Just, just familiar, if I may, uh, so we do, it has not been condemned, uh, I, I would, in fact, recommend that we get the condemnation, that we do have good service from them, otherwise we might lose our bond.
Get it set.
And with, uh, so I think, of course, we, we see the item.
If he's working with a contractor that, that condemned, that he feels is condemned also, so I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Mike. Second by Nancy. Thirty days, Mike, thirty, uh, thirty days, so that motion? Any further questions, it's now we vote on Jody. All right, Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Kip.
Aye.
And, oh, Connie.
Thirty days. Uh, aye.
It's gonna take a while with that.
Yeah, smooth it out. You think I'm a little bit of a idiot?
You're rough, Connie.
Uh, that property, B C ten sixty five, this property has been condemned, uh, demolition bids have been, uh, sent for the return date of January twenty first, two thousand twenty five. There's no action necessary. B C ten fifty four, this property has been condemned, uh, the owner has until January twenty first, two thousand twenty five, repair or demolish, there is no action necessary. Uh, B C ten thirty three, ten thirty three, this property has been condemned, the owner has until January twenty first, two thousand twenty five, repair or demolish, uh, there is no action necessary. B C ten thirty six, uh, this property has been condemned, the owner has until January twenty one, two thousand twenty five, repair or demolish, there is no action necessary. Uh, B C ten seventy two, property has been condemned, then for demolition bids, demolition pending issue with the return date of January twenty first, two thousand twenty five, there's no action necessary. Uh, B C ten seventy one, this property is scheduled for condemnation during January twenty first, two thousand twenty five, there is no action necessary. Finally, B C ten seventy three, this property, uh, has been scheduled for condemnation during, for February seventeen, two thousand twenty five, uh, there is no action necessary.
Joey, that's going. All right, any questions, Mr. Tom and his group? Well, the question, Mr. Tom, I don't really have a long way back, but he just, I don't know if we have something to decide.
We don't have any actions, except to say we appreciate working with you, and enjoy it, and we look forward to it.
Please, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, new business, the council considers ruling the December budget actual finance statement.
I move.
Move by Kip. Second by Jody. Any further questions, we vote on is Jody.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
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 Kip.
Aye.
Connie.
Aye.
Council consider proving sexual harassment handled in court for two thousand twenty two.
I move.
Kip. Any further questions, we vote on is Jody.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Kip.
Aye.
Connie.
Aye.
Council consider proving the resolution upon the mayor's protest, on the new elected, uh, elected council to their department.
Mr. Bush, uh, uh, elect Mike Mayford, huh?
They, they, they did nominate, open nominations, it, it, Mike, all right. I've got a nominee, I like the nominee Kip, please. Any other nomination?
I'm nominating George.
Uh, I'm a, thank you. Second, any other nomination? We, any other nomination, any other recommendation, okay, we vote on it. All right, uh, you got a motion, you need to vote on, on Mike, you want to go down?
Aye.
Connie, I mean Nancy, I'm sorry. Mike.
Aye.
Kip. Connie. Can you hear me?
No.
All right, we vote on Kip. Aye. Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Kip.
Aye.
Connie. All right, Kip, uh, the mayor's protest for the next four years.
I'll be on that.
I delete. How you got to do it? Department head. Yeah, well, I don't know if you do that. Okay, department head, uh, Jody, we'll keep you in the sanitation.
Show up with that?
There you go.
Maybe somebody can do it there.
I got the shot, I'll do my thing. We could be in sanitation in a thirty day. Well, we'll vote on Jody.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Kip.
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Nancy, we'll put you in sewage. Are you all right with that thing? I'm sorry for you, I'm sorry.
So what it is?
You're being more professional than me.
Whatever we say, whatever we say. Hey, Connie. Anyhow, uh, we'd like to put you in sewage.
Okay.
We'll vote on is Jody.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Kip.
Aye.
Uh, Mike, we'll keep you in the drainage, you good?
I'm good.
All right, if you have a question, we'll, we'll vote on Mike, Jody.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Kip. Connie. Okay, next, uh, street commissioner, Kip, wait on, street and night commissioner. Go with that.
Yes, sir.
We need to vote on is Jody. Aye. Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Aye.
Kip. We're gonna, Connie.
Aye.
I got it. Okay, the Connie took you in the dark, go with that. Okay, we vote on is Jody. Nancy.
Aye. Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Kip.
Aye.
Connie. Did I have it up? All right, thank the gentleman. And ladies, I keep the gate, ladies. Okay, council consider approving resolution.
I'll go to Jody.
Not the separate yellow red? You're gonna have to grab your.
You got one red?
Mike, I'll put you back in that stock.
Sorry, we, we voted for radio.
I'll consider approving a resolution authorizing signature, signature cards for individual bank accounts, the state bank trust, U C B bank, and land account for town and government. Uh, who by? Kip. Second, second by Jody. Any questions? If not, Jo, uh, Jody.
Aye.
Kip.
Aye.
Now, what I'm, I'm going back to over you. Jody, Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Kip. Connie.
Aye.
It's gonna take a minute, guys, just don't put twenty twenty four.
I'll be moving. Council consider approving resolution to appoint Bryce and jury, uh, jury Jean Bon, jury at town attorney. I'll move, move by Jody.
I said.
Second by Connie. Any further questions, we vote on is Jody.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Kip.
Aye.
Connie.
Aye.
Good luck.
Council consider a resolution to appoint jury, uh, Jean Bon as court, uh, as court magistrate, she will handle court. Nancy said she would.
Nancy.
Go. Second by Nancy. Second by Connie. Uh, question, we vote on Jody.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Kip.
Connie.
Aye.
Consider a resolution to appoint Johnny Larry as the clerk of court.
I move.
Move by Jody.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any further questions? Not, we'll vote on it, Jody.
Aye.
Nancy.
She have to stand.
What's the name? What's the name? Mike.
Aye.
Kip.
Aye.
And hopefully that's gonna be where the increase in fear, yeah? Yeah.
Go.
She already, she's been doing it for two years.
Exactly.
You're more efficient.
Consider a resolution to approve, uh, to appoint Bryce Oton as the town prosecutor.
Move.
Move by Kip. Second by Nancy. Any questions? Any further questions, we vote on it. Jody. Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Kip.
Aye.
Connie.
Aye.
Council consider a resolution to appoint G I S engineer, L L C, as the town engineer.
He's not even here.
Don't they vote for me, or you come?
Need a motion. Motion by Connie.
I'll take it.
Second by Kip. Any further questions? Any further questions, we vote on Jody.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Kip.
Aye.
Connie.
Aye.
Council consider a resolution to appoint Casey Tulliay to counter assist to the mayor, emergency response, representing with, and treasurer, and secretary, and deputy tax collector.
That's a lot. And don't forget, also, I like, also, the ethics there.
She didn't get to hear everything she was enjoying.
Second by Nancy. Any further questions? Any further question, we vote on is Jody.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Kip.
Aye.
Connie.
Aye.
Council consider a resolution appointing Michelle upon as the officer for tax collector.
I'll move on that.
Move by Kip. Second by Nancy. Any further questions, we vote on it, Jody.
I may have to, I did talk to, uh, the L M A attorney today, with my sister-in-law, and I had to stand, he said, I can't, who, that pertains to her.
That's fine. Okay, uh, Nancy.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Kip.
Aye.
Connie.
Aye.
I got it. The council consider approving a resolution appointing, uh, Michelle upon as the town, who will have a representative on the board of Fuch Power, Power District, number three.
I'll move on that.
Move by Kip. Second by Nancy.
Can we have a discussion on that?
Yeah, I think we get to say.
Nancy's.
Okay, there's a motion, the second, Mike, we're discussing.
Well, go ahead, you win.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted, uh, I, I, I just, uh, wanna know why we're, uh, we just appointed, uh, somebody to that position in July, or passed a resolution in July. So why would we change it? Was it a request by the parish, or?
Uh, the elections, we done achieved, not where we appointed you.
Has it always been like that?
Yeah, no, it's like, uh, I mean, we didn't know who was on when they like.
Yeah.
Any questions?
I just, I thought they had to have a, uh, I guess I could, I can't move. I had to have, I thought they had to have, uh, a vacancy.
That's a point that I recommend to y'all.
Yeah, but then the, the parish make the phone decision, that can happen.
I know our, all our recommendations, all we went through, you know, so we may have a, but.
I see the councilman has his hand, can I give him some time?
Yeah, I just want to bring to your attention, first of all, it's a five-member board. Two members are from Golden Meadow, but it doesn't specify what position. Your own property, it could be any two people that are dealing with town and government, if you're in this board. As of right now, there's no opening on the board for the town and Golden Meadow, that is filled. You got an opening coming up for, uh, Montez and Son in the tunnel there. And the town pass resolution twenty four two nineteen, appointed Troy Dupree in July, and nine, two thousand twenty four, two-year term, expired July the eighth, two point six. And you got Troy Dupree, Morris Giff, from Golden Meadow. And Dean Salvo and Montez. Those four members represent the whole district. They select a president, they selected Peter. Reggie. Okay? So Reggie Pete is the president, and there's the four members. So, the thing is, it doesn't say, if you read the orders, it doesn't say alternate, conservative, chief of police, conservative. So if you back up, when I was young, Nolan Pliss, also, the chief of police, he never served on that board. Eno Giff, he never served on the board.
That's fifty years ago, then.
Understand, Vanocelli, never served on the board. It doesn't say you have to put the chief of police.
Well.
I think me, and listen, I didn't get involved in none of y'all elections. I didn't, I didn't, I did science, this town is split down the middle, that's what you have. The problem, he just got appointed. Let the man finish the thing, and then, you know, put the chief as president. I, I, that's just my opinion. And I'm not trying to take sides. But it doesn't say if you read the, I got a doctor's. It doesn't say just the chief of police, it just happened like that, Reggie got elected. And he got on board, that's fine. So, I'm just telling you what it said, and it's gotta go to the council.
Okay, thanks for the explanation, but again, the new elected chief.
No, she recommended it. But there's no opening.
I knew it.
Yep.
See, the new elected chief, in the past, we always did, point the chief, as our contact for the people of, of our community, for the law enforcement, sure, you should know what's going on in the power district, and they bet, they communicate in relationships. And that's why I feel, that's why we changed it to chief of the town. This is the first time we changed that. But again, it's which is the council?
Mayor, I'll just look at your language, just so that y'all have an idea of what the council says. Let's be a five-year boardship, two hundred members, about a town of metal, two representatives, twenty-five, two parish councils, and one member selects another board member, who shall serve as the chairman of the board. Council, when I connect that very, I think it's true. Mr. Big, I think, the vision, the, uh, this time is not that, it goes a lot of times. I did look at Board membership act, the board members either review the project, have to remind the projects, or, or be it by pleasure of the council, or per just cause, in an appointed position, that board member shall be in writing, or the, the post of legal project, or the consideration of the. So, I'm a different man, and I still don't know today, he was at the same. If the council recognizes that the parish council, uh, Michelle, do have a position, the council will have to pursue it. They don't have to have a reason, just as part of the community, they will have to pursue it. And if the district, they will have to be able to, which means that they will potentially be replaced, and the council, kind of that option directly, to take the recognition, that's, that's kind of just the business. I just wanna educate the person, go either way.
That's fine, I appreciate that, because, I mean, that was my opinion, I'm good, good the mayor, I think we have to have that relationship, communication with the people that work here, you know, so, that's why. Thank you, thank you, that explanation.
No, this, this, do more.
Council has any other questions?
Or could it just take options on the air, for me, I said, I'm not from board, and.
I mean, it's kind, I'm looking at just kind of like a first responder type thing, kind of like what the mayor said, she's the new chief, you know, it's kind of go hand in hand. I mean, she's been on the job a week or so, and she's already getting a kick in the leg, and the knee and the shin, however, you know, are at it.
It's, it's, my, my view is not to kick her in the shin, she's got a hundred percent of my support. We have this, the Morris that's over there, and, but anyway, like we say, nobody's being removed, but she's being added.
It's a play, taking place, swapping out. Just like the people's vote, it's for us to speak all along, what you want to do.
I'm just saying, you, you saying that I'm kicking her in the damn ass.
So even if we do say yes for Michelle, it's still up there.
It's still up to the council, parish council.
But again, you know, she needs to know what's going on, all the, all the work, dealing with safety, who can, or, she might put it in our files. And if we gotta wait for somebody else that's not in house, might forget to say something, you know what I'm saying? Leave some, leave some proof. Anyhow, any other questions? Now we'll go to Troy.
I would like to stay on the board, because right now we're working with FEMA, uh, many projects that I'm working on with the internal, when it comes to policy managers and stuff, that I hate to see all of that hard work that we've been putting together fall by the wayside. Um, but also David Dorans, and he says that I'm appointed and I shall be there for two years, I don't understand what we're dealing about, shall is a, a, a good bit. So, um, I did speak to some other parish council members, and they said this is not precedent, they've never seen something like this done before, that a board member was taken off of a board to put somebody else. Uh, the easiest thing, if the owner was on a part apartment meeting, show up to a part apartment meeting, it was one month, it's, uh, like the last two days of the month, you didn't want to know exactly what's going on.
She'd be the person to communicate, me and you haven't talked since the election, so how would it communicate with you, and you don't communicate with this office?
When's the last time you talked to Morris Giff about the part apartment?
Sir?
When's the last time you talked to Morris Giff?
Last time I talked to him at a part apartment, he wanted to be appointed, and he says, yes, I said, no problem, sir. And I said, if you have any questions or any help from the mayor and the council, give me a call, and he said, fine, mayor, I appreciate it, feel the same. That's, that's our concern, we want things to move smoothly.
And I am doing this stuff for all of us, you know, the stuff that I'm doing on the boards for all of us.
I mean, there's people that were in this council before that didn't decide to run, they were involved, but things still roll, you know? Life, life goes on, you know? We just want communication. So, that's my opinion. I'm just speaking for the best of the community, and it's probably all. So, we'll vote on it, any further questions? Jody?
I have to stay with you.
Okay, uh, Nancy? Mike?
Did we get a motion, a second, we moved on? Okay, we did, okay, but in, in this, are we removing, because we still don't have a vacancy, so we have to include remove and replace, alright? Or, or accept the power. I, I'm, I'm just asking a question.
I feel like it's a two-fold issue, we, I don't, you don't necessarily have to add, you can recommend that she be assigned a.
And they did decide.
They could remove Mr. Morris. You know, I think James, so. Let's move on to see what else.
Okay, I'll move. Aye. Aye.
Tony? Okay, I got it. Alright, thank the gentleman. Council considered approving a resolution, uh, appoint Michelle LeFond as the Town and Golden, to represent on emergency nine-one-one board. I spoke to Mr. Reggie Pete, and he's willing to move aside, let a new chief take over, he said, whatever support he can give her, make the smooth transition, he's willing to do what's best, and the request of the council and mayor. He agreed, he presented something about.
I'll move on that.
Move by Gip?
Second, I talked to him also.
Okay, we'll vote on it, Troy, I mean, not Troy, uh, I'm not, uh, abstaining, Jody, abstaining, Nancy?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Gip?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Council considered approving, authorizing the mayor to enter into an engagement letter to S A P with Google and Bennett for two thousand twenty-four. Move by Gip?
Aye.
Tony? Any further questions? Any further questions? We'll vote on it. Jody?
Aye, I can move that.
Tony? Uh, Nancy?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Gip?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Alright, got it. Council considered authorizing the mayor to engage in COVID and COVID-19, preparing for the two thousand twenty-six, they're being ready to. Move by Gip? Second by Jody? Any further questions? We'll vote on it, Jody?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Gip?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I got it.
I think I said something before we, uh, also talking, I did ask about, if she should put someone up, the, the hire, uh, deputy, I can move for that, because it doesn't affect. This, this.
Any other business to be brought up before the conference? Any other business to be brought up before the conference? Anyone in the audience has any comments? Yes, sir.
Oh, I was talking about last meeting, I was there, I know, I talked about the monument, any more talk about, I mean, I kinda, I looked at it, I talked with Sal over there, you know, it's basically how it's constructed, and I remembered, and I kinda gave him a couple ideas, but I mean, I talked about it, uh, I think everybody was getting ready, and we'd be nice to have it, uh, I saw, but there, you know, the names are getting scraped, and it's stuff like that, so, I mean, if, if we can get it moved, time for cleaning up, and, uh, you know, the, the, if you moved in one piece, and, you know, you gotta feel, like, like Willis thought, you had a few cracks in it, but again, I, you know.
It was broken.
It's one of them things, you just, you start working, and then if it comes together, it comes together, if not, that is a problem, you know?
That's right.
So, anyway, that's, that's my thought, and, uh, I'm gonna say, uh, in four years, that we've got a new council, congratulations, you have a partner here, uh, living in town, and it's a lot of, I show all of you, congratulations, y'all, and I wish you all the best of.
Anything you'd like to say? Alright, is, uh, the business, you, you.
If I could, yeah, I'd like to. I'd like to thank, uh, Troy Construction, the donate guys, Pat Donnaboy, they donated a bunch of toys, we were able to help people in the town, and I'd also like to thank Chelsea Page, and her husband Trevor, we had the Mrs. Claus, Santa Claus thing, and Tony and Nancy helped as well, Jennifer Schaefer, and Rochelle helped as well, helping out with that, donating those toys.